Our Inspired Leadership Program we had in place this year. And we did this in response, in somewhat response to the pandemic and worried about mental health and the culture in our buildings. And the board voted a sizable sum to invest with a firm out of Wichita Falls, Wichita, Kansas, for the purpose of helping us work on the culture of our buildings. And now with a basically an assessment of where we are, do we, I assume one of you need, one of you or both of you need the projector up there?
I got it right here.
Okay, I will get off then. And with that, I'll introduce to you our TLC teacher leaders. And Tiffany Hars and Justin Meyer.
I'm just gonna sit here too.
Oh, we can, well, we can do that.
Yeah, now you're in the firing lines.
That's right. And maybe we could have, I don't know. I'd just like to be up here, I guess. I like to move.
Like, sure.
Yeah, correct. Okay, so we just wanted to go through and just talk a little bit about, one, where we're currently at with Inspired Leadership, a little bit of where teacher leaders, where our TLC administration is at, a little bit where like just the staff in general is when it comes to that. So the first thing is this year, the big initiative that Inspired Leadership talked about was just increasing awareness when it comes to the seven levels of energy. I'm not sure if that's what Tamara talked to you all about.
Yes.
I'm assuming it probably was. We talked a lot about that, which they are up there, and we just talked a lot about, the purpose of Inspired Leadership is not to get rid of level one and level two energy. It's to figure out if you're in level one, level two energy, how can you deal with those in an anabolic way rather than a catabolic way, is the big thing. So this is something that at the junior, senior high school that we started off, a lot of our collaborative meetings, a lot of our team meetings, just talking about, okay, what level are you at currently? They're talking about it's okay to be one and two, but if you're one and two, we gotta figure out how to work through that in anabolic way and not a catabolic way. We did have a meeting here probably about a month ago where we just talked about, okay, in terms of, in terms of our teacher leadership, so this is TLC members, administration was there, we talked about Inspired Leadership, how likely are we, how much do you agree with moving forward with Inspired Leadership on a scale of one to 10, or sorry, on a scale of one to five? Four point one was our average out of those, right?
I think with the TLC, you know, we've gained a lot of self-awareness and really the Inspired Leadership really targeted TLC, so we've had quite a few meetings throughout the month and we just talked about the different levels and different strategies on how to get out of level one and level two. And especially for me, how to stay out of level four because I am helpful Helen. And so that sort of work is what we're doing each month with Tamara. She really meet, she'll meet with me and Justin before the TLC meetings and we talk about things that, that we see coming up within our school, so that way she can address it with the TLC team and how we could address it, like if there's any situations or problems, she kind of helps us problem solve through it.
And just laying our cards on the table, my guess is in our district Tiffany and I probably have been the ones that are working the closest with Tamara in terms of Inspired Leadership, so that's just so you know. But that is what we asked TLC members and administration to kind of rank on a scale of one to five, what their thoughts were on supporting or not supporting even more of that. We also did around that same time at the junior, senior high, we did just the teaching staff at a collaborative meeting, I asked the same exact question in a very similar way, how supportive are you continuing our relationship with Inspired Leadership? And we got a two point eight for those teachers there.
On a five point scale?
On a five point scale, yeah, correct.
Slur right down.
Pretty much, now is what I would say there. And this is maybe just me saying opinion, but I, I think a lot of that does come down to, it does feel this year that Inspired Leadership has really focused on our teacher leaders, our administration, Tiffany, myself, our TLC members, that's been the bulk of what we have done with monthly meetings, with meeting with Tamara on our own, that sort of thing, even some mentor coaching. So with that being said, that is something that we kind of talked about here, we had our last TLC meeting last Wednesday, and our main question that we really want to figure out is how can we take what we're doing with the teacher leadership and extend that Inspired Leadership out to more staff members? But that's probably the main focus of next year, that we need to get more staff involved with, when it comes to that. Take not just the teacher leaders and do what we're doing with teacher leaders, but we gotta figure out ways to be proactive and be productive, moving Inspired Leadership out to the staff as well, is where we're at. I know these are just some things that Inspired Leadership offers that we can kind of choose. And then district-wide, we talked at our last TLC meeting, what's really needed is we need to create some sort of like culture plan of reinforcement of where we want to go and move forward. Because we just talked about the current reality of the situation is we're in a teacher shortage, we're gonna continue to be in a teacher shortage, the number one thing that we want to do is keep people here, make people want to show up to work, make people want to be here, keep people here, keep people in the profession. And the number one way we do that is creating some sort of plan for our culture. And if that involves Inspired Leadership, hopefully that involves Inspired Leadership moving forward, but we need some sort of plan when it comes to improving our culture.
Yeah, and I guess some big takeaways for me is just building that self-awareness. I took all year just to kind of be able to become more of like, I'm an expert, I guess, in the Inspired Leadership. I don't like to teach or talk about something unless I have more confidence in it and I really understand, you know, the full model. So those are some things I've been working on with Tamara. I know in the junior, senior high, they've done more like in the meetings of professional development with it. That would be my goal for next year with this, is to start bringing it out to the staff members now that I've had that full year of training and being able to talk with Tamara about how to be able to bring it up in our elementary meetings, along with some of our professional development, talking about the different levels and doing some of the activities that they had. And what I really like about having Tamara specifically is that she is a third-party person. She doesn't know anyone within our district. And so it's really helpful for me specifically in my position, I can talk about a situation or a scenario that maybe I don't really want to bring up to Mr. Young's attention yet, I want to problem solve through her with it, and she doesn't know the people that I might be talking about. Just because, you know, I can't talk with other teachers about it because that's my role as an instructional coach is to keep all conversations private and that sort of thing. So she really helps me be able to come up with solutions in that way.
What sort of questions you all have for us regarding Inspired Leadership?
I guess what I, by what I'm hearing you is, is for the, the two schools when you ask that question, is it working or do you think it's working? You've got four point one out of this one, but then you've got a two point eight up in half with the elementary.
So the, the four point one was with our TLC members and our administrators, so that was with our teacher leaders that had.
The ones who have actually gone.
The K through 12, correct.
The ones that have gone through the training stuff.
Correct.
And the others who are two point eight is all the rest of the staff.
That was staff members at the junior, senior highs.
The ones that haven't actually come through again. So what you're kind of saying is it's probably, that number can reflect the fact that there are a few of them that haven't been through the training, haven't been exposed to it. So that's kind of why it's probably splitting up?
Yeah, and I, I would say there's that, and I do think that there's a little apprehension from some staff members of, one thing that Inspired Leadership asks you to do is to be vulnerable. And there's a little bit of apprehension on some that they don't want to be vulnerable unless they see other people being vulnerable, so there's definitely a part of that.
And also the people who are kind of stuck in level one and up to have a hard time.
Sure, absolutely.
And they're the ones that truly need it, and that's why it takes extra work on your part to, to get them there. This one, I, I really think it's worth it.
Well, and I will say that this, you mentioned that you had the rest of the staff coming up where, we actually had two full days, one in August and one in January where they got a full day of intensive training. So, and, and these two instructional coaches have also been leading activities with the staff, trying to introduce themselves, so it's not like, not like they, they're not really aware.
It's resistance of something new, it's something that's never been tried here before. It's scary.
And, you know, it's all about self-awareness and when you're aware of something that, about yourself that's negative or, you know, not so likable, because a lot of people don't like that, and so you're gonna see, you know, maybe some more resistance in that case when they become aware of some of the things that they're doing.
Trust me, I know very well.
And I think the tough part with Inspired Leadership is, I brought this up at our last TLC meeting, Inspired Leadership is not going to fix us, like we have to fix us. Inspired Leadership might be an avenue in which we can take in order to come to that. Like, I like the fact that, so, so for example, this is just anecdotal, but we had a meeting in here where we were gonna talk about teacher burnout because it's, it's there, it's present, it's one of those things that in my opinion, we have to talk about it because there's teachers that are leaving the profession, so we did it. And before the meeting, I had a teacher that said, you don't want to bring this up, you don't, you don't want to touch that. I'm like, no, I think that we need to. I used Inspired Leadership as an avenue in which to do that, and by the end of the meeting, it, it worked out really well. It, it did not turn catabolic, it didn't turn, it didn't turn into one of those things where it felt like at the end, all the energy was drained, it turned very anabolic where it felt like, okay, well, it's nice that we should be able to talk about that. So it's an avenue in which we can do that. Is it, is it the only avenue that exists to do that? No, because ultimately, we need to put in the work as a district to do whatever it is to improve our climate and culture. Inspired Leadership is just one avenue in which we can do that.
One question I have, and that is, we have always as a board been looking at this Inspired Leadership program as, as something that we can do, hopefully help develop a better climate in the district. But my question is, if we did not use that method, or that technique, or that program, what else would you think would be better? And that's what I'm looking for, I'm saying is, you said we gotta do something, and we gotta do it ourselves. This is just a tool. This is not, this is not the action that makes it happen. It is a tool that helps us take the action that improves it.
I think no matter what, it has to be something through a third party. It's gotta be someone who can be completely neutral and, you know, not have any high stakes in the game, especially kind of, you know, where we're at. The trust is just not there, and, you know, that's big. And so being able to have a conversation with someone like Tamara and be able to get that advice has been truly helpful for me.
That leads me to the second piece, do you see another year of alternative help being positive or negative in that direction? That's what I'm looking at, is this, is this the kind of thing we need to continue to work with, or should we look for something else?
Yeah, thank you for asking that question, I should have made a preface, the evening but I, I will likely have this on the next board agenda.
Okay.
I wanna have that in. That's, that's what this is about.
Yeah, so, okay.
I think, I think that we as a TLC team need to develop our own plan of what we want it to look like. You know, Dr. Fraser mentioned that we had two large group professional development, and I think that those and a couple of the other TLC members think it was just too big, where maybe some people weren't as comfortable having conversations out loud because there's too many people. And so I know this isn't part of her plan for next year, but what I would like if we go forward with Inspired Leadership is to make some of those groups smaller, whether that's the TLC take leads, because I know they don't have enough people with Inspired Leadership, you know, to come here and make the group smaller, but I think more smaller intimate groups, we could really start problem solving instead of problem finding.
I guess this is, I don't want to speak on behalf of the staff because I haven't necessarily asked the staff that question, so this is my personal take on this. But I, I do believe that another year of this could be beneficial in terms of just consistency in language, in not starting something and stopping something, but saying that this is something that we can do. And one thing that we talked about that, that now that we've been in this for a year, my hope is that we can have Inspired Leadership work for us rather than feeling like we're working for Inspired Leadership, if that makes sense. Rather than saying like, no, we, we want you to tell us what to do. Now we can be more of, no, this is where we're at, now this is what we need from Inspired Leadership, because they have so many different things that they can offer. If we can be more of, no, this is where we're at, this is what we want our culture to look like, now what can Inspired Leadership offer to us, so we're leading it rather than necessarily the other way around.
Do you think that they are capable of, of changing what they've offered to you to meet those goals?
I think absolutely, I know just for a fact that like Tiffany and I have had issues where we literally have contacted Tamara and said like, hey, we've got an issue that we need to help work through, and within like 15 minutes, she texted me, texted us back and said like, okay, yeah, let's meet.
You said it was one of my day.
That, that, that's one of those things, and I think that that, like, that is probably reflected as well in terms of our teacher leader thoughts versus the rest of the staff thoughts, that we've been able to have a lot more of that intimate access to Tamara that the staff hasn't necessarily had with them.
Well, what you've taken from them, they've given to you information, you use that to process through whatever issues may be going on with staff, correct?
Oh, absolutely.
So it's, in essence, the staff is receiving the benefit of it, they may just not see directly what's coming from Inspired Leadership.
Justin and I have had a lot of practice with the clarifying affirm and the powerful questioning, so that way, because we said, you know, that a lot of people do come to us with, you know, the different scenarios and situations, and so that's the one thing that we focused in on, on our individual coaching, is how to clarify people's feelings, affirm, you know, how they're feeling, because it's genuine feelings, but then how to get them to, to think about solutions on their own. And like I said, that's something that I was working towards, because I would always tell them, okay, you need to be a A, B, C, and so that way they can become more reflective.
That, that's one of those things that like all of these different offerings, Inspired Leadership, I don't think necessarily comes in and says you have to do these things in this quarter. This is all things that are at our disposal that hopefully we can use more of. Because what, what Tiffany's talking about is more of this, like mentoring, and this is more of, okay, when somebody comes to you with an issue, how can you use Inspired Leadership in order to keep them? Which, which in, in my opinion, has been extremely beneficial for me in the past, because Tiffany and I, a lot of times, have people come to us because we're kind of the, the go-between, if you will, between staff and administration, so that's, that's one of those things that has really helped me there, to be able to use Inspired Leadership to do things in the right way, when, when those sort of issues arise.
So hopefully you could help extended staff.
Yeah, oh, absolutely.
Be able to develop those same skills, so you don't have to be there doing that.
I, I think ultimately that would be 100% where we would like to go with this, where the staff can become more involved, and that's the main question that we've got up there, like how can we extend these sort of things to the staff? And, and we need to figure out, and we talked about as a team, coming up with our teacher leadership team coming up and coming together this summer and coming up with some sort of plan, this is what we want our culture to look like, here's how we can use Inspired Leadership in order to do that.
I would be super interested in like a monthly plan, like this is what we're doing this month, and I would love to help you with this, okay, because I think this is huge for our school, like, I know that you know what you're doing, so, but I, I, I think that there's resistance. I mean, you can tell that there's resistance from the staff, right? They're not all buying into it, and I thought it was great, like when Tamara went to talk to us, I thought it was fabulous. But I, it is a lot of money to see me do this, though it's not working, but then it's not working, so I think if you have the next 12 months, here's our plan, and this is what we hope our numbers are at the end of that, I guess, with the teachers that think it's worthwhile.
Do you think the staff would be more receptive of like a monthly plan, like at least they can see in small doses, versus you were saying, you know, this, this is our big plan, but maybe you're gonna be like this, we're gonna start here, we're gonna be here, but there's like a direction in between?
Yeah, absolutely. I think something else that we talked a lot about it, we need some sort of ability to assess where we are at as well, because a lot of times with so many initiatives and things like that, it's okay, we're, we're gonna implement this initiative that we're gonna try to improve student learning, okay, but what exactly does that look like? What is the data that we're seeing in order to see that improvement? Like, I mean, anecdotally, I could come up with a whole bunch of anecdotes, of teachers coming and saying like, I'm feeling this level, which is fantastic that teachers are saying that sort of thing. Teachers might not necessarily understand that that's a step in the right direction because they're, they might be looking more bird's eye view of big picture, that sort of thing, but just being able to have that common language, I think is something that's fantastic. To be able to start a faculty meeting and saying, what level are you currently working from, and having teachers be able to like share that and be able to share that they're not necessarily always at a level five, they're not always at a level six, they've got this going on, and they're at a level two. And understanding that, I think is of huge benefit.
At least the common language is a way that you could identify individually as well as you as the staff, knowing where people are, because otherwise, people are wandering into that, and you don't know what's causing them to have certain behaviors that no one can read or understand unless they have some weakness that helps them identify where am I and why am I there.
It's not about labeling good or bad either, it's just the fact that like if I know somebody is level two, that's fantastic, because now I can, now I know how to handle situations that may arise.
Tiffany and Justin, if you'll respond to this, I think as a TLC and administrative team, we were a little frustrated when we got here to this last month and talked to the Inspired Leadership people in Wichita and said, okay, what's your plan for next year? And they say, our plan is to be here for you. Yeah, and we said, yeah, but what, what is the schedule of the event? Well, there's no schedule. What, what activities should we be engaged in? Well, that's for you to decide. I think there was a frustration that although they'll be there for guidance and support, there is no plan at this time. Your reaction?
Sure.
Um, well, as someone who wants a plan, we've already outlined our PD plan for next year and the next five years, so.
You'd be more planners.
So that is definitely worrisome, that's definitely one of the components that I worry about the most, and especially being as they would only, at this moment, come in for one half day, right, Dr. Fraser? That does concern me, it, I feel like it would put a lot on my plate, but at the same time, like I said, I don't know what else is out there. I don't know what else to do. I know we need to do something. I don't want it to where, you know, we act, I, or as a district, we, we think that the problem's solved and we're done with Inspired Leadership. I want to do something, I just don't know what that necessarily is. And so I just, I liked working with Tamara, but if we don't go through with it, then we decide that there's another party out there, I'm willing to work with another party. And well, does that even answer your question?
Let me put it a little bit simply. Do you see this as a threat or a challenge? That's how I see it. For you, it's either a threat, I don't know what the heck we're gonna do, or a challenge, we're gonna make this.
In my opinion, it's a challenge.
I understood, I, I could understand, but that's why I asked her.
That is why I wanted to.
As a, now that I've had a lot more training with Inspired Leadership, it would be more of a challenge. If I can take time to really learn it myself before talking the talk.
Yes.
Then I would say it'd be a threat, but now that I've had more coaching sessions with her and done more personal learning, like I've done a lot of reading on the different things that I need to do, and thought, look, I'm how to self-improve. So now I would see it more as a challenge, but if you would have asked me at the beginning of the year, and said this was a plan, I would've said, um, no, thank you, this is too much for me.
I do think ultimately there's a shelf life on Inspired Leadership in terms of, I don't think that it's one of those things that we're always necessarily paying for Inspired Leadership in doing that. I think ultimately, in a perfect world, what happens here is, year number one, they come in and they tell us a lot of what to do. Year number two, hopefully we can tell them what to do for us, and ultimately, like Inspired Leadership just becomes part of us, and then we're doing it in-house. Like, I know the AEA, for example, like Central Rivers AEA, they've gone through a lot of Inspired Leadership things, our school improved consulting less than more, she's now moved into a position in the AEA where she is doing Inspired Leadership within the AEA herself, that she's an Inspired Leadership coach within the AEA. So if we could do, if, if we could have some sort of system that that's ultimately, it's like they're handing the baton off to us, and we ultimately need to take the baton and go where we want to go and where we.
Do we need the crutch? I'm, I'm really being pointed here because I need insight, or otherwise I don't know what to do, because I'm.
Ice, ice.
I'm gonna start, I'm gonna once again say, I need that third party, that person that I can go to and be able to problem solve with, and then be able to go to the staff and know that, you know, that, that gossip mill's not gonna run.
How about you? I'm confident, but I'm not confident enough to say that I can do it by myself. But Inspired Leadership, I, I would, I would like to have that crutch that helps me.
Well, before you run off, I think where we are at this point is we're trying to find a path forward. And one of the things we, Tiffany alluded to the idea that we're planning a retreat, maybe July, maybe June, at least one TLC member suggested it be in Las Vegas.
Yes.
I said Bahamas.
Well, I said Bahamas, too.
People are getting sick and dying there, you know what?
Okay, well, somewhere on a beach, the sun. Clear water?
Clear water, yeah. But anyway, we're, we're looking at getting together and trying to develop a plan of action, and we're also looking at some outside resources that would come in and help facilitate further activities. I made contact, I've got a meeting tomorrow morning with top 20 leadership out of Minneapolis, and as a possible resource, we may be able to. So I think we're, we're undecided, the TLC like this, they're favoring it, but we'll have a recommendation at the June meeting, definitely.
I have one more quick question. So if we decided to go through different path, not Inspired Leadership, do you feel like that you would be taking a step backwards or are we, are we learning? Or do you think you could still continue this path?
I don't think so, I would still continue the Inspired Leadership as I'm learning their new program or their new lingo, I would still be using Inspired Leadership, because I would assume that it's going to be similar in some way, maybe they just use different words, but I would fall back on this until I knew more, and then I would transition into that new program.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think ultimately it might be a step back in terms of like, here we go again, one step forward, two steps back.
I think the systems we could keep.
That, that would be my biggest concern, I think, concern with that. But just anecdotally, a lot of the, if we just go back to why is the two point eight anecdotally, I would say that it comes from reservations, and it comes from more of a fear of being vulnerable, than it necessarily comes from, no, we hate Inspired Leadership. Anecdotally, perhaps I'm out of line talking on the teacher's behalf to be there, because that's the data that I have is two point eight, I don't necessarily have any hard data that way, so anecdotally, that's what I'm saying.
Dr. Fraser, Tiffany, could you tell the board about that Tiffany, we go somewhere like Justin, we just, we took all the questions. We got all the teachers.
So I'm, I'm starting to now bring that Inspired Leadership practice into the elementary now that I've had that, that work done. We came into the gym, we sat in a circle, and before that I asked everyone to fill out two sticky notes, one sticky note of what was very heavy on their hearts, and then a second sticky note of what was one thing that they were grateful for. They didn't put their names on it, they didn't put any names on it, so we sat in a circle and we all drew one out and we said it out loud. Then we went around that way, we did the heavy first, and I kind of just gave some sit time, just some quiet time. I guess I'll back up for a second. I did set some norms that, you know, everything that was said was gonna stay in the gym, that you're not supposed to go and heavy judge, or think, oh goodness, this sticky note's about me, or this sticky note is definitely Justin's sticky note, you're just supposed to reflect upon the topic in itself. Then we went around and we shared, you know, what we're most grateful for, and then we just talked about common themes. And some common themes in the elementary is just that mental health, that mental physical exhaustion is basically a lot of what the sticky notes were, were talking about. And so it was just a time that I reflected at the end, I said, you know, we're all going through things that we don't know about, so just to try in these last three weeks to be kind to each other, step up when possible, and ask for help when needed.
One other last thing that I'm just gonna say, that I do appreciate the fact that you all got involved in Inspired Leadership, but I know staff also feels that way as well. But if we do that, the more. But if we do that, the more that everybody can get involved, I, I think that that's gonna be fantastic. If that's something that we do from all the way down, it's noticed and I think that can eat some of that apprehension that, the apprehension to people.
Only way something works is if it's from the top now. I mean, everybody's gotta do it. If you wanna, if you wanna improve the culture, it has to start at the top as well as the bottom. And you can, you know, if both sides don't do it, it's not, it's never gonna work.
Things will get laid as you guys are speaking this room, whether right, wrong, or indifferent, just the way that it happens. Do that.
I think as a district, though, it's huge that we are involved in it. Cause I, I learned a lot in that hour that I was there and us as the community members, we hear from people a lot, right? So if we can bring that mind thinking into how we respond to the community, it's a huge thing. And, and you, I, I have started to do that now. I'm like, okay, I'm not gonna be the helpful hour anymore. It's like, it's a false, it is, yes. It is, but I think that.
Tiffany helping right there.
Well, that's why you all are where you're at too. And that's why a lot of teachers are where they're at because that's what they want to do. There's energy levels that are higher than that. There's better ways to build up.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you Tiffany, thank you Justin.
I think I don't have to drive home to a tornado.
Better drive past.
It's not the newborn worried about a stelder too.
I was thinking maybe your way.
Next, we have the superintendent's room.
Okay, looking at my report online, you'll find it on, um, somewhere in your packet, page 51. Is that right? Did I read that right?
Yeah.
Page 51 in your packet. We're coming along on hiring. We had a recent resignation that you were able to prove tonight, but other than that, we are, uh, we're in fairly good shape right now. Uh, this teacher shortage is exploding around us. And Mark, what did you say? How many jobs are open right now in the state?
I think it's funny you mention because I just looked. Classroom teachers only, 2010. Not special ed, not custodians, not paras, just classroom teachers, K-12, 2010.
Regarding our new addition, I think I suggested, uh, at the after March that there'd be a number of things. We'd have the interior tire all up by April 11th. The roofing and the brickwork would be done by April 15th. Uh, drywall will be hung. There's finally some drywall, some drywall hung. Uh, but I'm a little bit disappointed. Uh, they pulled out some of their people and they, uh, they sent them over to the daycare. The daycare's been getting a lot of, well Ramsey building's been getting a lot of attention. They, the contractor was trying to get by with one foreman to haunch up two jobs, spending all his time in Ramsey. And basically we got on the back, we ended up on the back burner this time. But they assured me you have at your place a project schedule and although they were originally saying that they were gonna turn over keys to us July 1st, they're now saying that, oh, maybe more like July 15th, that they're only two weeks behind. I suspect it might be a little harder than that, but we'll wait and see.
Is there anything in the contract, anything that they don't meet up by a certain time?
No, because, because, uh, those bids tend to be more expensive. So yeah, you can get those penalties, but contractors like to pad their fees to make sure that something like that happens. So by doing it the way you did, why then we're trying to save taxpayers money.
I will say after you, I don't know about it, they've been here every day and they're here at 6:30 here.
Good to hear.
And they've had good four or five of them each time.
Good to hear.
They're not really early. Yeah.
The neighborhood.
It's your wake-up call. It's just not like a call, right?
It's gonna be great when it's done though. It's looking pretty cool. Okay, I'll work on that. Let's see. One of the things I'd like to bring call to your attention, the third page of my report, the ISB has changed its guidelines only really slightly regarding what is proper solvency. In other words, how much cash should you have on hand? And it's recommending now seven to 17%. When we're at 16%, uh, we're right within those guidelines. And if you look at the very last page of my report, it's a map of the state of Iowa. And you can see the gray are the schools that are within the guidelines. Uh, the, uh, the kind of brick red is that little colored line, we call that brick red, the, the ones that have low balance. And then the orange is the negative balances, which means schools that are seriously in trouble. And then the navy blue, those represent schools that have very fat persons. And ISB does not recommend that. That means they're sitting on a lot of cash that's taxpayer money and it's more than they need, uh, for school operation purposes. So, uh, I, I feel good about where we are in terms of cash and, uh, we, there, there's been a critic in the past that said we had too much cash and we needed to find ways to get rid of it. Um, and this suggests nowhere I wish. And I think that's about, no, I've got a couple of quick items. So we've got some carpet bids that are coming in, uh, right about what we estimated. It's gonna come in about $22,000. I did want to ask, uh, Rick, it's gonna be at graduation on Sunday. It's Sunday at 2:00 PM in our high school gymnasium. Was there anybody else, any other board members that are planning on being? Okay, and, uh, and finally, usually we do superintendent evaluation in, uh, at the June meeting. So I, I will likely be asking McKenna and Felma to be sending out the evaluation forms. And with that, I'll send out a report on my goals and a self-evaluation, uh, for your person.
Just because I'm new, can I see the goals from last year? See what you guys did last year?
Well, they're the same goals last year as they were this year.
Oh, okay.
Focus on the same. Keep making progress.
Well, I know the goal.
They're bigger.
Yeah.
They're bigger goals.
Yeah, I just didn't know.
Well, you mean as far as the district goals or the specific board superintendent goals?
The board superintendent.
They're basically designed to be in support of the district goals. We, we're going for alignment, so every, everybody's working on the same projects.
Makes sense.
So now we'll be on to the rest of the reports.
It's been crazy. Just put it that way. Ready for, getting ready for graduation. We have practice tomorrow, seniors' last day was today, um, and of course graduation on Sunday. We had awards tonight, Tuesday night. Lots of great awards and honors for each of those kids. Track means get tracks right now. We have several events. I saw that Tate, um, qualified in finals for the 100 and the 200 so far, so that's, that's good news. Esports won tonight, um, second round, they're on the second round of the state competition.
First round of state, yeah.
So that's, that's a great thing. Um, summer sports have started. We have, I think, five, about five boys that go to Eagle Grove and play baseball and then we have about 20 girls that play softball. We have good numbers in the softball program. Junior high has quite a few baseball players. That'll be good for the next couple of years to work on for the baseball that we have. One thing that I want to bring to your attention and then we'll talk a little more deep about next month is I would like to revamp the open campus. COVID came, I think they did a lot of changing just because they wanted kids, have so many kids in study halls. And it's got to the point now that I have kids in and out of this building all day long, every period. We don't know who's coming and who's going. So I'd like to go back to some of the things that were, that are in the handbook, already stated in the handbook, free COVID, such as if they have a NIAC class, they have to take that NIAC class. There will be a room for them to take that, where there's some supervision and some support if they need that support. Right now, this year, 25% first semester, 25% of the students that were registered in a NIAC class dropped or failed that NIAC class. And then it's like the second semester, 21% didn't succeed. At the same time, open campus this year is juniors and seniors. 44% of the juniors that had permission to take, have open campus were not able to because of grades. So there's a lot of things we need to work on. So I'll bring an actual proposal next month, um, next dates and stuff. Is that correct? Dr. Fraser?
Yes, please.
Yeah. You'll have some more detail if I'll get it to him and it can, it'll be in your board packets and you can look through it more closely before we get to that one. It's some things we're, we're working on to try and improve grades and, um, I did talk to a couple of parents and they had seniors and they felt that their seniors were really disconnected from this program. Oops, some kids I saw two times a day, give two times a day all year long. So I never really, you know, built a relationship with them. I just think it's what's best for the students and teachers and everybody involved. Other than that, we got a few days left. It sounds like school year. And so, yeah, we'll, uh, have some activities that last week, the last couple of days and we'll be off in some. It's been a very, very fast year. Extremely fast. Any questions for me?
The one at Plays were fabulous.
Oh, yes.
You guys, your actual video was marvelous.
I was.
Is there a video?
I'm sure there probably is one.
My daughter's was also.
Yes, oh, yes. I mean, we had great.
I'll take on a couple of things that skipped, slipped my mind that I want to add to CK's report and that is, she mentioned our esports team and the success it's enjoyed. This is growing in popularity. I expect nearly every conference school, if not all of them, will have an esports team by next month. And meanwhile, um, Osage, that's, you know, we've got 18 school conferences, we've got nine in the eastern division, nine in the western division. And we're in the west and Osage is the single largest school in the east where it's mostly just smaller schools. Whereas the top other, four of the other five largest schools are in the western half, that being Forest City being the largest, third largest being Garner, fourth being Little Grove, fifth being Belmont Fleming. And, uh, Osage has been, because they take a lot of pride in their sports programs, their volleyball team is regularly, at least competing for the state title. They have been wooed by at least three other athletic conferences come play, participate in our conference. But, uh, and they're, they're not afraid to travel despite the price of gasoline these days, but they would prefer to stay a little closer to home. Uh, we have, as an athletic conference, we have often done the opportunity to move into the western division. So we'd be competing head to head against Osage, could potentially be competing head to head against Osage, maybe in volleyball.
I'll pick on those Z Devils again.
That's, that's all I wanted to add. Any more questions or comments for our next call?
There are none, we'll move on. So, uh, several different topics. Um, end of the year, um, tomorrow, the seniors will be in our building, um, which always brings a few tears and bugs, et cetera, to the teachers who had them when they were little ones. And, uh, tomorrow afternoon, we're having our talent show, uh, which I'm really looking forward to. Uh, we had, like, after my first year, we made a decision that we really wanted to have a talent show. We have a lot of talented kids, dark blood, fine arts. So we had one my second year and then COVID hit and then last year we couldn't really do it. So we're back, you know, and I'm excited to have that. So kids are gonna be there and we'll have a special guest or two, I'm sure. And, um, then next week, we have our Elmet you track me on Tuesday, weather committee. Weather right now looks amazing. It's supposed to be like 70 and no rain, so hopefully that'll hold. And then Thursday, we're having our fourth, um, reading and running club run, which will, um, because Lenny Scrooge is amazing and so smart. She said, you know, why don't we finish on the track this year so that people can come and watch and have that and kids watch. So, so we're gonna run, start on the trail, run up to the end by Louis, come back and then finish in the stadium for our two plus miles. So that's exciting. Got about 30 kids who have been coming and running twice a week with me. Weather has not been real cooperative, not gonna lie, uh, but it's, it is what it is. Um, I just want to touch base on a couple of things. Um, Tiffany, uh, mentioned the, the exercise we did. Um, and without getting on the details, you know, it was, it was good to have everybody kind of be in the same room and talk because we didn't get to do that very often. Um, even staff meetings, you know, people are gone, they have appointments, they're gone, doing other things. I think personally, everybody was there, uh, last week when we did that. And I found out later that a couple of staff members really felt like something that was said, um, that was on some people's hearts, maybe it was something that they had said or done to another staff member and they wanted to atone for. And they got together and talked and came and saw me and said, I just want you to know, we had a problem, we resolved it. And without me intervening, without anybody intervening, just they ended up sat in the room and thought about it and it prompted people. So I know that that is hard and I, and I'm like, Dr. Fraser, I'm kind of, the squishy feeling stuff is sometimes hard to quantify, or in terms of, you know, like, is stuff getting better, is our culture getting better? It's hard for a number of that because, you know, it's not like, wasn't we get good in math school. It just doesn't happen that way. But I also think too, um, that we're gonna start next year, unless something happens, which I hope doesn't, we're gonna start this school year with every classroom teacher in our building having experience in the classroom. We're not gonna have any new teachers in our classrooms this year. We have a couple of new teachers in specials, uh, PE and art, um, but K-6 classroom teachers, we're gonna be in special ed, we're gonna be people who all have experience in the classroom. I haven't had since I came.
Can you not quit when you say that?
And I just, I think I said that. I said, you know, unless it's a disaster, sorry. But, and, and again, I think, I think overall, we're making progress. I think things, you know, people are more engaged with each other and they're doing things. Um, I see people chatting in small groups and not in a quick way. The last thing, I think it's last thing. Um, okay, two things. But, um, Dr. Fraser, can I share my screen real quick? Feel free. Um, you know, we're aware that we started, instituted a keyboarding program this year. Uh, Danny Shong has been in charge of that. And, uh, unfortunately, we only had half the data that I was hoping to have today. I know it's really hard to see. Um, it's gonna be a really small bit. Um, so fourth, fifth, the districters have been doing at least two or three times a week. I'm spending time on a typing program called typing.com, which we, was very cheap. Uh, we're looking at whether or not that's still one we want to use for next year, but, um, so fourth through sixth grade, you can see, uh, there's a pre-assessment column, um, their last test, and these are words per minute. Um, and so the, if you look down at the very bottom, so these are about half of our fourth, fifth, and sixth graders, um, as of today. Um, the average pre-assessment word per minute was, I think, 12. Uh, yeah, 12 words per minute, the average is now 31 and so an average of 19 words per minute go. And some kids were up in the upper 40s and 50s. Um, again, these are kids that never had keyboarding before, never really had any formal training, any form of editing. So just the practice and the time they get to spend on this year made a big difference for them. We get to keep, we keep the data as far as errors and this is without errors, this is basically the math of errors. So I thought that was a good, a good start from where we're at and, uh, that's all I have for that. I think that's all I have. Any questions?
Is that what, does that spelling the words right?
Mm-hmm.
That's pretty impressive. Wait, it doesn't do a form?
Oh, it does not do a form.
Okay.
No correction.
Actually, any questions? No, it's, keyboarding is critical. So that saved my life, that's all I know. Well, that will complete the reports section of our agenda. We'll go down to action items. Page A is amend, the amendment for the fiscal year budget 2022. That is on page 56.
Hey, Teresa, you want to talk about this at all?
Sure. Um, so it, this is kind of standard for us where we, we come back each year, look at where the numbers are and go ahead and just do the amendments. Uh, a lot of the increase that we are seeing is actually A lot of the increase that we are seeing is actually because of those retention payments that were approved and the ones for the teachers have gone out and the ones for everyone else are actually going out here on the 31st. And generally, you know, if you, if you turn on your TV, you probably have a pretty good idea of why our expenses are higher, just everything, fuel costs, supplies, everything's just up. The construction project, I guess this was maybe wishful thinking, they could stay on track and have some big payments going out the door. We may not actually have that money go out the door yet in this fiscal year, but if not, we'll see it next year. So did you have any questions about the budget amendment?
There are no questions about it, too, where I ask for a motion to approve. So move by you. Second?
Second.
Michelle seconds it. All those in favor of the budget amendment, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion carries. And that's what will be creation of a core diploma program. This is not a decision that the board needs to make tonight. I bring to the board, in case you feel comfortable with it, you can act on it. This is a program that's been developed by Dean of Students, Callie Stein. And this is something that some, some schools are going to because we're seeing unique student populations we haven't necessarily seen in the past. We're seeing, for example, an immigrant population coming out of Latin America where kids, because of the gangs and violence in the schools, some kids have been pulled from school for their own safety in, say, third grade and do not come back into school until they enter our ninth grade. And then, or maybe even a higher grade. And then the chance of catching up on language skills and basic skills before, so they're able to graduate on time, it can become very challenging and put them at risk of dropping out. CK, help me with this if I'm not on task, not on track. The idea is that we do not want to make a diploma easier. This is not the idea that we would, we're just going to lower standards and any kid who doesn't want to get a regular diploma and get a core diploma and take the easy way out. That's not intended for this. This would be students, specific students that have been identified as having these unique circumstances, these unique backgrounds, that they would be given an alternative primarily to get the core diploma rather than becoming a drop-in. How do I do this, CK? Is that by what we're talking about on this?
Yeah, we require them to meet all the core requirements that both the state, they just would have, not have to do the electives. So like we have 26 credits that we require to graduate, four, I think, is eight, I don't know, I don't see, I can't really see where to go, four, three, 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 nine, 13. 13 core credits is what they have. We have students that are coming to us in 10th grade that are, we put them in 10th grade and they're actually 17 years old. You know, we don't want them, we want them to have something to fall back on because a lot of that, to be honest, a lot of them, you needed some kind of a diploma and a parent's citizenship. We don't want to take that, we don't want them to drop out and do the without. Can't give them what they need. So we did, we did talk to the Boyne Public Schools. They're the ones that have actually made this part of their curriculum.
They're kind of the pioneer program on this. Our program is a big model out there.
Yes. So we think it'd be very beneficial for some of our students.
And how exactly are we structuring it to identify who does qualify and who doesn't? The criteria by which we determine who does and doesn't qualify is a little ambiguous.
Right, we have a, we're developing, we don't have it developed yet.
I got you.
We're developing an entrance exam.
I got you.
And, and then we'll have, hopefully, some schools were lucky enough that they might send us a transcript. They're like Guatemala and that, sometimes we might get a transcript. Sometimes we don't ever see a transcript. So that's kind of, and it's our kind of line of discussion as well.
Okay. It's hard to give a placement test that might determine what grade they should be placed in when there's a language barrier.
Yeah.
Well, we've, on the, let's see, on page 58, we talk about the Iowa standards and we're talking about meeting the core requirements according to Iowa law. Really, there's no getting around that. This would not be an alternative to Iowa law. And, and then there, on the next page are some frequently asked questions. And, and that it's not that, and I think one of the key ones is can any adult refer a student for a core diploma? And said, no, this is going to be, this is going to be a team. And, and, and we're going to make a cooperative decision. Isn't that a fair statement, CK?
Yeah, there won't be one person that decides. We've been working closely with Hannah Lee's and Lander, who's out of the ADA, that her focus is EL students. Been working close with her to set things up and get things in place. So we have a team that meets with that. Patti is part of that. Tiffany Landrum, Justin James, myself, Callie, and Hannah Lee's, of course. So we already have a sort of a team put together.
If the board doesn't feel comfortable with this, what kind of questions or what kind of data does the board need, what kind of information do you need for us to come back with next one?
So this could be a really not bright question, but how is this different than the alternate school? Because isn't that kind of the same path, like kids that need extra help and stuff like that?
Yeah, and we, for the most part, we don't reduce the number of credits. We don't necessarily eliminate the electives, although we do offer some alternatives. For instance, we do more workplace learning and student getting a job or something, get earned credits or graduation that way. But the alternative learning center, this downtown offices, is, is very computer based because it really, the computer program is designed to meet the Iowa standards in each of those courses. And, but that can be a real barrier for students that have language issues. That's the problem.
And the reason he says that is we use Odysseyware, Odysseyware, we're coming if we check into it to see what programs we could find that maybe we're in scanning show another language or there's very few of the online stuff. We feel that they still need that face-to-face knowledge, you know? And the kids that are at the alternative school are ones that this isn't the setting that they like making, they can function in, that they can be successful in.
I guess what I can, for me, the reality is, is that kids 17 years of age and they're in 10th grade and they're not going to get through the electives, that they're going to be gone, they're going to drop off. If we can get them the core subjects that the state requires, English, government, base, the math courses that they have to have, so they should be competently educated. If this is what it takes, I will give it, I would leave me without the form of program.
How many students do you think would go this direction right now? That are enrolled? If you have any idea.
We have been thinking given those terms.
I would say there's probably, probably half a dozen. All right, because of our, the newcomers that we've gained just this year, we get 14 there all of a sudden. And they're older.
Make a motion.
I'll second.
Second. Do I have any more discussion? Very. First one, I think.
Anyway, I want to, I mean, we're going to implement that sheltered biology class, which would be, it's where Tiffany Landrum, who's our EL teacher, of course, would begin with Mrs. Jewell, and they would work together and those, then we put our EL students in there. And I'd like to have some more of those sheltered classrooms in math and English where we can meet them at their level, you know, where if you haven't had school since you were in third grade and now you're 16 years old, well, we got to go back and get some of that stuff caught up. So if our English classes or math classes can go back to that level where we can get some of that basic math and English, then that's what I'd like to see eventually. That's not going to come right away. Biology is next fall, but that'll be our first step.
Guys, I see this as an opportunity to offer something that people are never ready to fully integrate into American society, unless we give them that opportunity, especially kids. We're talking about kids, an opportunity to get their citizenship, their religion held, to do the things that every other kid can do, but maybe not the full of the language skills that the rest of the kids in that class right now. I think it's a great opportunity because I, I see a lot of adults here, if they're willing to speak English. And frankly, if we can offer those kids to step up, I see a lot of those adults in this degree that are striving to give their kids the education, their children. It's one of the reasons why they came to this country is for their children and the opportunity to get a core diploma. And we all know there's a huge difference between what you can earn as an adult if you have a diploma, just high school diploma or not. There's a huge difference. So I see it as a win for us and we're all here to support the students and make sure the students, so why not go for it? So I have a motion, I have a second. I call for both, all those in favor, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion carries. And then the next on our action items is specifications for bus speeding proposals. Our transportation director, our short-term director has, is recommending that he would like to see the board authorize the purchasing of a bus. He's got one that he would like to put out to pasture. It's, it's not really high mileage, but it's high maintenance. It's 122,000 miles and it's nickel and diming, as he says. And he would like to see us replace that. He feels like we still need another, if we pull that out of our lineup, we still need another bus. So I'm asking the board to authorize the purchasing specs. If you'll notice, they're the exact same as we, the last time we first purchased a bus, which was in 2019. Matter of fact, they still have the 2019 date there. We're going to add that date before I send that to the bus. It's seven, it's one. Right, because that's what we're looking at, minimum of eight months. We're going to get our kids transported, part of our job. I know. Motion second, any more discussion? There are no further discussion. I call for a vote, all those in favor, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Second. Yep. And then we'll move on to D. Okay. It's been about, it's been approaching 20 years now that there's been a thing called parent educator certification. It came about, it was a question during the no child left behind law in the early 2000s. And parents were encouraged to get certified, the idea being that we should have better trained people working with the kids in the classroom in addition to the classroom teachers, we should have better trained parent educators to improve quality of education. Belmont Fleming, 20 years ago, decided that they, that we should encourage parents to get their certification by giving them a $100 stipend at the end of their first full year. That may have been a lot more money back in 2002, but it's, it's, that's currently still our practice. What I'd like to suggest is something a little different. And that is, rather than just a one-time payment of $100, what if we gave them a 50 cent an hour raise, an hour raise as long as they remain certified? Such that the certificate is good for five years. If they let their certificate lapse, why then they'd lose the 50 cent pay, but they could actually boost their pay as long as they remain, as long as they remain certified. Now, the cost of certification is $360, 50 cents an hour for your average para that's working seven and a quarter hours a day is going to come out to about $600 over the course of the year. And in addition to the $360 for the cost of the class, there's also an extra fee for licensing and even perhaps fingerprint. And so 50 cents would be a small incentive in the first year, but hopefully people would see that there's a benefit that keeps on paying for subsequent. So I propose that as an idea. I have had this conversation with the head of the BK E A, teacher, support staff union. They support the idea. They agree that they're willing to waive the $100 stipend. And so it's not a case of if we're operating 50 cents an hour and somebody's going to say, okay, got my 50 cents, now where's my $100 stipend too? No, that's not going to be the case. The, the union's going to stand behind that. And. Well, we think we should have some benefit by having better trained paras. And as Jim pointed out, when paras are trained and certified, they can also substitute teach in special ed classes. So that's going to actually help us with some substitute issues as well. So I'll turn it over to the board to read it and discuss. Which do you respond? I think it's a great idea. I think a lot of times, paras are not considered the same date as educators, even though they aren't educators, because they're just not qualified and certified teachers. They have to be certified and trained to be a certified educator. You're, I don't have any problem paying them ongoing benefit, not unlike we do on certified setting. I reached my masters, I get, I get rates. And I'm going to keep that rate for the rest of my career at this school system. Why would we want to take it away? I'll make it something less, what paid for. I don't care. Yeah. If you believe that we do. Okay, I got a motion. I have a second. I got a second. Any more discussion? We're going to call for a vote, all those in favor, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Next on our agenda is student fees for the next school year. Hey, we always in May set the student fees for the coming year. And we're limited what we can set fees on. And for the most part, I'm suggesting no increases in fees. However, I am recommending changes in lunch prices. I think the price of food, price of fuel is going to continue to drive up the cost of food. And the fact that we have not raised lunch prices in four years, I think it's necessitating that we need to, that we're going to need to get caught up. As I say, the lunch prices this year were the same as they were in the year 2017, 2018. And I don't feel good about it. I don't like to pass burden some costs onto our parents, but Teresa and I are of the mindset that we, we're looking at about a 10 cent increase after this period. Keep in mind, we're limited to 10 cents. If we get behind the eight ball later and these, these prices really begin to spike, pardon me, lunch, food costs begin to spike and we get, start getting a declining budget, we can still only raise our lunch prices 10 cents in 10 cent increments. And therefore, if you're talking about a $2 meal, 10 cents is only a 5% increase. And, and that's hardly where inflation is, especially in terms of food costs.
Do you think that they'll need free lunches again?
No, they will not. No. They, Jim, it's pretty clear there will be no free lunches next year, right?
Correct.
You might see in the media, some schools are, that's because they are meeting the community eligibility provision. We do not meet that criteria.
You mean that by having enough people that follow you?
Yes.
We generally have a high percentage of applicants.
Like enough. Right. What's the level of the reduced, of the, what percent?
CDP, 62.5%. So you really want to be, to do that community eligibility condition?
We don't think that.
We don't know. We're closer to 50%. The other thing is when they run the numbers for that application, they only run your direct certification. So it has to be someone who qualifies via like a state program, or if they're homeless, something like that. So filling out the free and reduced application here doesn't go toward our percentage for that application.
The other thing I'll mention, I am recommending a change in graduation fees. It's costing more to graduate our seniors than they're paying for their graduation fees this year. So we have a choice. We either lose mine or decide not to graduate the senior class.
Unfortunately, you're seeing this across the board in parents, with city fees, county fees, I mean, with the prices and the inflation wave is. This is something that's going on every year. It's something we just can't help but do. I hate any question. Well, no, it's, and it's actually a good one. I mean, if you haven't come eat, look, look at the adult feast. I mean, you know, it's not that bad for breakfast or lunch, either one. It's, it's not a bad price for a decent meal. So.
You take their meal from that at the hospital?
No.
It's four or five bucks or something like that.
So, I mean, it's a good price. And they're always looking for help, to help serve lunches too. So if you want to buy, if anybody in the board wants to. Help serve lunches. It's fun. I gotta, I gotta find time to come back and do it again. I did it earlier this spring, served lunch in my school. It was really a blast. It was fun. I had a lot of fun. So, but, okay. Any other discussion? We've been off topic. There are none. I call for a vote. All those in favor, as it's been presented to us, signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. Motion carries. Higher summer temporary help is our next.
I do, I'm sorry. I should have removed that. I do not have nominations.
Okay. Let's get that then, and we can go down to discussion items. Actions in the state legislation.
Well, are they in actions? Are they? Okay. Right now, they're still in session. And they're still costing the taxpayers money to keep the legislature open. But right now, the understanding, the governor's got, has been on getting vouchers in. And she wants to keep the legislature open until she can bring enough pressure to bear on certain members of her party so they vote for vouchers. And right now, she doesn't have that majority to vote on it yet.
She has the Senate, right?
Senate passed it, just not the House. And so this is basically a power play. And like I said, it's costing the taxpayers viable money to keep the legislature in operation here into the middle of May. Now, legislators get a per diem rate, and that, that expired back in April. That's not, so it's not, so it's actually costing them some out of their own pockets to be open, still in session this late. But still, there's the security and the other operations that are going down the Capitol that are costing our government money. And other than that, I don't have a whole heck else to report to the board at this time.
Okay. Well, we'll move on to B, wrestling program.
President McDaniel, if you consent, I'd like to invite Coach Bell, Coach Butler, actually.
Coach Butler, if you want to come up and talk to us. I don't think it really worries him that much.
No, I can tell it doesn't actually bother him. Yeah, I, I guess, I would like to express something to you, Mr. Brooklyn, about what Justin was talking about. And this is off topic, but I got set here. It would be nice to know as a staff member, we're going to follow the same protocol that we've been doing this year, instead of thinking that we're going to do something different. I think that frustrates the staff more in the fact that, okay, are we going to change again this year? I'm upset.
Great input. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I guess there's two things I'd like to say about the proposal that's been put before us from the other school is, number one, a personal opinion is, I don't feel like, personally, I've had time to build up the program like I'd like to have it by myself. Being on campus and being around, around all the kids and talking to them constantly is, is a good thing for the school. I have kids that are aggravated at me because I send mass email amounts out about once a week about, about wrestling camps and wrestling stuff coming up. And I got basketball players sending, why are you sending it to me? And I said, well, then don't read it, okay? We did start having open mat on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Didn't have it turn out like I was hoping we'd have out, but we did have a couple of kids show up and I did have a couple wrestlers show up to help out with that because I cannot be in the room when they do that. But it's there and it's known. We're going to do it one more time next week on Tuesdays and Thursdays. I have set up a summer schedule on Sunday evenings, that I will come back from Grunde County and open up the wrestling room for an open mat scenario. So my first, my first opinion is on this is, I would really like to try for another year to see if we can improve the program. That's my first proposal. It's to be on our own. The second proposal I have with the school that wants to come join us is, my recommendation is that they bring everybody over, guys and gals, both. Two reasons for that is, the first reason is, we're kind of going to be one team regardless of what the sex of the wrestler is going to be. And I think that just will build a better foundation for us to do all this. The second part of that is, hopefully it'll bring some coaches over with us. We've had, we had a good guy apply for it because of some certain personal problems. We just, we couldn't get him hired. And thank goodness for Mr. Jazz stepping in on the junior high level, helping me out when I had to take JV guys to meet. He ran the varsity practices and did a great job of it. And also he's helped me out through practices with the junior high kids being in there. So I guess my proposal is, and I know they said that they would send the guys over here and we send our girls over there. But I guess my proposal is, for me personally, is if we're willing to join with them, I'd like to see everybody over here. We have room for everybody in our practice room to do that. I do understand it's going to take some conversation between us and them to figure out what we want to do and how we want to do this. It's going to take some conversation on who's the head coach, who's not the head coach, are we going to share head coaches? I've been through this before. Facts is, I, I was the assistant coach of Tri-County Wildcats with the Community Center at ECLU. And my son was a senior when that disbanded and they went to ECLW in South Harden. And so I understand all this. I've got seniors that are quote unquote upset about the fact that somebody else is coming into our room. And I've told them before I said, we don't have enough. We've got to get more bodies in there. And I said, if you can prove that we're recruiting and we're getting more people in there, that won't happen. And so far, that trend hasn't, hasn't taken place yet. Maybe it will, maybe it won't. If it does, then we'll have to revisit what we're doing and maybe make some adjustments. I, I do think it's going to take, I'd get together with, with me and their AD and their coach and our AD and maybe some other administration on how we want to handle all this. One thing that's really kind of sad is, in my opinion, we just got brand new uniforms for Broncos this year. And I think we look pretty good and dressed up anyway. And we, we had, it didn't show it on the scoreboard, but we had success. So, anyway, my proposal is, I would like to keep everybody here. And if nothing else, bring them over and have them in our room. You know, and where we, where we split some things, there's probably some individual school things that we need to split. For example, I'll just throw this out there. I would like to have a senior night just for our seniors here at our school. And if they have seniors, we have a dual meet at their school. We have a senior meet for them, just to recognize their own kids at their own school. I will tell you this. Tri-County, ECLW, and Grunde Center had joined for almost 13 years. And it took 13 years for the Conrad people and the Grunde Center people to sit together and believe in each other. And it wasn't that they necessarily did not get along, but they just didn't know what to do with each other, I think. And until my oldest son's out to junior high and got to know the guys on the junior high squad, and we all started going out after the wrestling meets together, then all of a sudden, we couldn't keep each other separated from each other until, until Grunde decided to pull out. But I guess that's my opinion. If you have questions about what we want to do, I don't, I don't know any more than that. And I, I know it's you guys' decision on what we do, but we're going to have to do some discussion with them and find out what they, you know, their side of the deal and what they want to do. And I, I don't want to shortchange our kids, and I want to make sure we're expanding the program. And like I told somebody today, I said, I'm, I'm not a BK wrestler. I'm not a Bronco wrestler. I'm a Lord Tiger wrestler. But I don't care. I, I took the job to wrestle, so.
Mr. Butler, I appreciate that. You surprised me. I didn't know you were going to suggest this other unnamed team because it's not official yet. And I do not have license to talk about what other school that may be. But supposing that other school was reluctant to the, send the, send both teams over to you, would there be a possibility of a truly shared program where maybe 50% of practices were at each school, 50% of home meets were at each school?
That's probably, probably very true. And, and the other thing about it is, just off record for, I mean, not off record, but just maybe off the cuff. You know, we get to the wintertime and wrestling and basketball just stink because of weather. And if it looks like something bad's coming up, then nobody travels. We got rooms to practice at, at our own home bases, you know? And when you get the kids out, you don't. And so that, that in itself is a kind of a plus in one sense of the word, you know? We're not, we don't have to shortchange it because of bad weather. And, you know, we lost, we lost two invitationals and two junior JV meets and one high school meet last year because of weather. And it, you know, we don't have a very long season in the state. And, but that's a possibility of that. And that, you're absolutely right, Dr. Fraser. And I'm a bus driver, so guess what? You don't have to pay a bus driver sitting wherever we go to sit there. Good luck in driving over there.
So your recommendation is to do a shared program? Like that's what you would do?
I, I would hope that we have enough to be on our own, but I don't think it's going to happen. And because we can't say what it is, it's.
Well, I really appreciate your input. At least I have a sense of direction before I commit this meeting tonight and all of the board. You know, it's been really hard to figure out what's right for the kids, for the wrestling program, long term as well as short term. And, you know, if, if, if we can help our kids be better in sport, whatever the format might be, I think that should be our goal. And that means we do cooperate with somebody else, however that, however that's laid out. I think that's up for the administrators to figure out, not for, not for me necessarily.
No, I understand.
But I, I like that. But I'm glad they heard from you. You spent a year with the kids last year. You saw what happened. And you've been honest with us in saying, I'm not sure I'm going to have enough to have a good full program this year.
We only had three kids who will do single records last year.
That's awesome. But we just didn't have enough kids.
And one of them was her. And we won, on paper, we won 50% of the build meets. On the scoreboard, we did not finish at the bottom of the conference. On the regular season, we did not finish at the bottom of the conference at the conference meet. And with that came to go to districts.
Any more questions for Mr. Butler? Thank you for your.
Before he goes, first off, I have deepest gratitude for Mr. Butler for taking over the wrestling program this, this current year. I mean, people that step up, I mean, with his years of experience and want to make that, you know, we get people much younger than him saying, you know, I'm just reaching an age where I just don't want to do the coaching anymore. But there was a generation that thought that was part of the job to do these extra, extra duties. Isn't that right, Mr. Butler? I don't know what happened to that generation. Most of them retired. But anyway, so it's with deep gratitude that I thank Mr. Butler for what he's done. And I have, I have most respect for him because he doesn't have to be doing this. And he's working hard at it. He's trying to be, do a good job by our kids. That said, I would respectfully disagree in certain respects. I'm wondering if we can really sustain a full wrestling program. Just because, you know, it's, I'm not sure we are getting the most, doing the best by our kids by just with our small cluster of kids competing against each other. I, one time, I'm an experienced wrestling coach myself. I've coached at three, four different schools, coached wrestling. And I was at one particulars, particularly school that had a particularly small squad. And it was a case of we didn't have enough to really push each, push the athletes and help them really truly develop their skills. And I do, do think that puts kids at a disadvantage. So, you know, I wouldn't say this behind Mr. Butler's back out of respect for him, but I do have reservations about this, about what he proposes. And I think we need to come back. My suggestion is we need to come back at maybe the June meeting and have a public hearing on this. Give our public a chance to voice their opinions and have a district proposal through the board. What are your thoughts?
Yeah, I feel like you can't do anything now because you don't even know what the school is or what it is. So without knowing the number or anything, there's no way to.
And we don't know what the, yes. I mean, we could, we could be talking about a school and honestly, it's two wrestlers to do this under our, or maybe like 10. You don't know what that number is. So I don't know if we added one or two more that would help. And, and I think everybody on this board knows how stubborn I've been about sharing sports. But I think for the wrestling program, for our athletes that want to succeed, I think we're going to have to look at sharing. I think that's where we're at, that we're going to have to look at sharing. Whether that's, school comes here, that, that's the best case scenario for me, is we can draw another school here. You know, we can have them come here. That'd be great. I'd love to keep it here. But we have to look at, I really do think we have to look at sharing in some way. I think that they need a, they need some positive thing coming up. Yes, they're all going to come here and do all the program here. Especially, and that's what I'm willing. And that's what I've been fighting the whole time here for, I'm not losing the, I don't want to lose our program. Okay, I think that's a good one.
I think it's very interesting that somebody wants to come with us.
Yeah.
And I, I know what the conversation has been over the last three years of what to do, whatever. That's not, I guess that's not my point. I'm not going to argue with Dr. Fraser about what's, you know. I'm not going to argue with Dr. Fraser about what's, you know, that's my, my kind of feeling. But I, I think it's pretty awesome that somebody thinks that they want to come. It just, before I leave, I want to keep one thing in mind. If we do share, there's a very good chance that A, we probably won't wrestle under BK Broncos on it. And we'll have to have different uniforms to wrestle under. Because A, for example, I've been involved in two of those. We went to Tri-County and when they went to South Harden, they went to the store. So I just, not that that's a deterrent. We have to scrounge money up, sell them, possibly, if that's what we'll do, so. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Butler.
Is that ready?
No, I, I stay in town.
Oh, you do?
I live with Jerry Lane.
Where, oh, Jerry. Oh, I didn't know that. Oh, my God. How do you, what?
Sorry.
Sorry.
I just know there's a long issue.
I didn't know that you stayed with Jerry. Oh, my goodness.
Bless you.
Next on the agenda, if somebody wants to speak. Yes, we have. Next on the agenda is Ken, adjournments who are meeting.
Well, future, future agenda.
Future, future agendas. You may have any?
I just, I'm still looking forward to it. Planning. Something I'd like to say.
We need to, we need that, want to keep that focus. Anything else? Hearing nothing, I would call for adjournment. You have a motion second? For adjournment.